Very nice.
I thought I heard that. Yeah, I thought I heard. I couldn't figure out what it was.
Oh, wow. Totally.
Oh, okay. I heard. I couldn't figure out what it was.
It's actually, if you go through the...
What did you say? We went to five days and I did the impression that we combined with your show. The rest of us, let's just do the book.
Yeah.
Yep.
But it's one thing and...
Probably came in with... Really done. He gets... Well, he does a... There's two guys around here.
That's how you know it's still got a little bit of real... You're there in my part of life more to ignore them when they're...
Well, I worked the city show already.
Really?
Yeah. Clear on the main... A lot of... You gotta know a lot of things before you do it. And there's a lot of checks inbound. Everybody has a job and, you know, you're putting a couple of... You don't get a whole lot of anything to...
Gardner City Council will come to order if you please stand or address some questions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is to... So I better bring a tape. Our first order of business is to recognize the service of some... Some of our city staff. I know we've... We do this. I enjoy doing it. The first five represent 25 years of service in five different parts. Our first person to recognize is Officer Anthony Garcia from our police department.
Come on up. Come on up.
I've known Officer Garcia for a couple of years. He... You see him primarily at the... At the school events in the evening. That's where I see him. And those that work for the school district see him at the schools during the day. He's been an SRO for...
Four years.
Four years now. So, uh... So you graduated. This whole class, this group was with you the whole time. That's pretty awesome.
Good kids.
They are great kids. And I know you do a fantastic job serving the community in that role.
I'm very good friends with the principal at the high school, Tim Brady.
And I hear good things about everything you do out there on a regular basis. I know we're really proud of the job you do. And he does patrol. In fact, I guess you're getting ready to... To hit it. Yeah, that's right. It's that time of year.
Back on the beast.
Good for you. Good for you. And then good for Gardner, too. So five years. That's a... That's a good deal.
Good by the way.
Did go by like that. I'm ready for the next five. Captain, anything you'd like to say?
I pretty much said it all. Like I said, you said he's been there for, you know, five years. You worked a year on the road and got put in as SRO. So he's been texting all the kids around the school for the last four years. Keeping himself busy. But you're doing a great job, mate.
Thank you very much.
It's good. It's an important... It's an important job. And, you know, I think it helps tremendously to have... Have you guys in with the students and helping them out, particularly those kids that... That are kind of on the edge, that need a little TLC. And I know you guys bring that. So that's tremendous. Anything you'd like to...
Sorry, it's both an honor and privilege to serve Gardner and its citizens. And thank you to Captain Moore and Chief Berlin McGee, the school resource officer for the Gardner City School District. Because that's kind of my calling and that's what I want to do.
Great. You do it well. We do have a little... Couple of certificates. One for the wall and one for the pocketbook.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Officer Drinker. Erica, are you here? I thought I saw you. Yeah, there you are. I thought I saw you coming. Erica also has been with us five years.
Yeah.
That's an amazing thing, isn't it?
Yes.
Amazing thing. We've seen a lot, a lot of change. Erica's also a resident of our fine little community. So she's vested in making sure that everything does go according to oil, as you like to say, on a daily basis. And I know you took a little bit of time off to add to the population of Gardner City. That's a wonderful thing to do there. And you've been back for a little while now.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's awesome. And we are glad to have you.
Thank you.
And we're glad you are with the police department, certainly. And it's a tough job. I see you around quite a bit.
That's right.
Which is good. Which is good. And that's what makes our citizens feel good, when they see you around quite a bit. That's a great thing. So, Captain?
Alex said she's been here five years. If my memories are right, you were a dispatcher with the Leitha Park of coming here.
Is that right?
She was telling people what to do to go down there doing it.
Oh, no. She's on the other end of the mic now. Oh.
She got to tell people what to do. Now she has to go down there.
Oh, no. It's a lot more fun.
It is true. Yeah.
But she too does make some jobs. She did all the...
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And of course, the same... Same two certificates that Anthony got.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And we're looking to look at... Amy was here earlier. Ah. Amy Kindred is our planner. She came, started with us also five years ago in 2007. It was a... Right at the time, we were like this. And then all of a sudden, we went like that. But we've had a little bit of this starting again. And so we've been pretty busy with everything going on. Amy has been able to use that brief little breather that we had here in Gardner to start bringing in some of the codes and tightening up and cleaning up and getting things together so that as that... As that growth starts again, we're ready to... Ready to address it. Amy has had a tough, tough go here. Kind of the Lone Ranger, if you will, in the planning department and having to deal with everything that comes in. And while, you know, we know that we've had growth that has slowed down, it hasn't stopped. There's still challenges, still plans, still all those things that need to come in. And still planning commission meetings and presentations and... And presentation... Outstanding job in doing that. And I know that you've had folks from the planning commission that were here earlier. Oh, they're there. They're there. And so, of course, Melissa. Melissa, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah. I'm in the bathroom. Well, I just want to thank Amy for her devotion to the city of Gardner. She was here when we went through layoffs in our community development department and had to kind of overnight step up and take on a lot of additional duties and responsibilities that she's never done since her first job in planning. And she's done an amazing job assisting me learning in the area of community development when I gave her five, nine, two years ago through the week. And she has inspired all of us to look at how we're doing things and try to do better with those processes that we have. And then also look at new codes to help ensure that quality of development that the community expects from us here at the city. So I've really enjoyed getting to know you and working with you. I know we'll make friends. And congratulations on your progress and service to our community.
I did forget to say that she had to train a community development director during that line as well. So that was an interesting... An interesting situation. So anyway, thank you so very much for looking forward to it.
And I just briefly want to tell Melissa how much I appreciate all she's done for the past two years. So she's done a great job. Thank you.
Move on to... On to public works. Ty, are you here? I thought I saw you. Yeah, there you are. Okay. Thought I saw... Ah, wearing the collars. Good for you. Are you supposed to be... Are they in town or are they gone? Put it back on.
I haven't been in town.
Oh, okay. Ty also has been with us for five years. He's got one of the... One of those tough jobs in public works. Those are the quiet jobs that... It's kind of silently happening in the background. But we absolutely are dependent upon you guys doing a great job and keeping things going. And the nice thing about public works departments, we don't give them any complaints. So if we don't give any complaints, that means what? Means stuff's getting done before something happens and we hear about it. And that is absolutely tremendous. I know you had a personal challenge here not too long ago and had a big fire and made it through that. Thankfully, everyone was okay. And the only thing lost were things. Which is a good thing. And you made it through. And we're glad that you are here and appreciate all your service. Five more. David? There you are.
I started with the street crew five years ago. And then he had a morbid fascination with plumbing. Occurred on the line crew about a year and a half ago. He switched to the line crew. So a little bit of public works on the surface and public works on the underground. And we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Keeping it flowing. That's what we need. All right. Another guy with a... With a brightly colored t-shirt of that state. Will you come on up? David's also a member of the public works team. And he's also a citizen of Gardner. So when it ain't flowing, it's... Or there's a big hole or whatever, it's a personal issue. And I know he spends... This past year, he hasn't spent much time on plows, thankfully. But I know a year... A couple of years before that, there were more than a few hours in that. But David's also been with... Dave's been with us for five years as well. I know, again, you know, this is the... This is the work that we don't see. And we're glad... We're glad that we don't see it. You guys do such a great job. And I still want to match outstanding. We very much appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, sir.
David?
Way back. We actually worked together at Douglas County Public Works with...
Oh.
Twenty years ago.
Okay.
David's father attempted and successfully, on my end, to teach me to use roadside mower. He didn't want his time dragging me out of the ditch. So we've had the pleasure to work together for two times now.
Yeah.
It's great.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to say to the...
Just watch out for people out there working in traffic, guys. Stay there.
Absolutely.
Just keep an eye out for guys working.
You know it. All right. Our final presentation this evening is a couple more years than five. Mr. David Frank, where's... Where'd he go? Oh, there you are. Come on up here. Dave actually has been with the... With the city of Gardner for... As an employee for 35 years.
Wow.
I don't know how long you've actually been in the city of Gardner.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five years. I like that. Dave and I actually go way back. Our daughters, oldest daughters, played softball back when Westside Park was the only park we had. That was a couple of years... That PTA, that was a couple of years ago, wasn't it? If you remember what... You know, Dave's been... He's been with utilities. He was our first lamplighter. Gary Gardner. Not quite. Not quite. We're close. We had a lot of change in Gardner Electric and now Gardner Energy over the course of your career. That's right. Twenty-four hundred people. Put in a... Put in a generator. Couple generators, actually. Did a lot of... A lot of changes. With a lot of growth. Couple of substations. More than a... More than a few redundant circuits. And, I mean, it's been a lot of change. A whole lot of change. That's right. That's right. So I saw Bill earlier. I don't know that he... Oh, he... There he is. Oh, okay.
Well, obviously, Dave's seen and done lots. You know, we don't have enough time to go over all the things he's seen and done tonight. But, you know, one thing I probably want to say about Dave is, you know, this vision being here has also faced a lot of challenges. As a town with a couple thousand people the size of today, he's seen that, you know, a lot of town get built. He's actually helped build and maintain a lot of the electric system. There's people lights on right now. Faced a lot of challenges. I mean, he stuck through all... Even a few years ago, we had the deep cell. And he was one of just a handful of people that stuck out. You know, even when the future was uncertain, he hung in there and, you know, kept doing his job. And kept the generators running. He kept the subs functioning, you know, all by himself. And so that's something to be proud of. And Dave's definitely, you know, loyal to the utilities and loyal to the city. And he's generally committed and committed to his job and generally cares about the success of how we all do. So thank you, Dave, for all your hard work.
Agreed with that. Dave's also a regular fixture at council meetings. He's one of the... One of the few that comes and sits through some rather dry discussions at times. Well, this is a little something from the city on your behalf. But also, the League of Kansas Municipalities also likes to recognize significant milestones in service. And public service is a... It's a tough job because depending on the size of your town, you know, Gardner, for example, you've got 19,000 buses. And that's one thing that we often don't recognize in public service. And you've been with us and done a great service for our community. And we very much appreciate it, as does the league. So thank you very much. Is there anything you'd like to say, since you have an audience? Your chance, council meeting. You got something? You got your opportunity to...
Do you really want me to start it?
Okay.
It's been good working here. I've learned a lot. And as I said, I'm the only... I'm the last employee. When I first came to work here, we had run water plants, sewer plants...
Roads.
Roads. Doing everything underneath the sun. And there's always one alignment on duty. So it was either Lee Gerber or myself on call. And when he became supervisor, I knocked him out. So guess who was on call? So...
Yep.
That's what it was several years.
I know. I know. And you live right here in the center of town. So you didn't have to go far for any...
No, they used to call me to get the trucks out. So I could pile the streets and get everybody else out.
That's right. That's the downside of living in town. That's right. Okay. Well, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Let's take just a couple of minutes to grab some refreshments and talk to the folks, tell them thanks for everything they've done. And then we'll get back to the business. So it'll just take a few minutes, five or 10. And council come down and talk to the... Talk to the folks as well. There were probably... Probably a couple of times. How you doing? All these kids here. Caleb? How are you?
Congratulations. I did you a picture?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah. This is what I had. Still be alive.
We sort of... We've been... So here's... Yeah. It's good. We're gonna be straight.
I got a bird.
My head, I probably wouldn't be here.
I didn't say the men of... And I was actually... Tried a minute with my hands. I was getting ready to... My mouth was... And I was... Is that right? I didn't wish to be...
Boy life, working again? I really... I might work that out in years. I'd work more. I'd work a battle more, folks. Not much of it. I live by a lake now, so... I live right by Shadow Lake over there. So it was, you know, if you're up at the forties, you can handle a regular... Come out and take a boat. But, uh, since you're talking to us as well, there's bad... Bad weather. Time to pass.
You're flapping your left arm.
Grab my phone, go running down. I'm right here. Those streets stop. You're on the street. I'm right there. I'm right across the street. And you're right on the street. Probably... You weren't the guy that killed that fox.
No, no.
Okay. A lot of David's stories about that. Whole neighborhood was up to our work because they loved the fox man. Well, stretch my man. Stop right there. Couple of cats have been in the backyard, the fox. They're back. I can see them tomorrow night. I have my man John here. No kidding. I'd say they're... And then so every year, you know, it's... Make it easy there. We're working. Sure, whether it's holiday or state. Same quarter. Here.
That's sad.
Closer couple. And now being... Three after...
You're funny, David. Funny. You're funny.
All right. Thank you all very much. I appreciate that. Appreciate you being patient and taking the time and celebrating a little with our staff. It's a... It's an important thing. They're all important to the success of this city. And we are glad to have every one of them. We do have time allotted on the agenda for anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda or that is not part of a public hearing. That being the case, we will move on to executive session. We need a motion to enter executive session to discuss personnel matters related to non-elected personnel, specifically regarding the city administrator position. We need a time to go in and then a time...
Specifically regarding the city administrator position, entering executive session at seven thirty, returning to regular session at seven forty-five. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
...